Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. It is June 21st at 6:30. I would like to call the Rockford Area School District Board of Education Regular Business Meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jamie Hilstrum.
Here.
Beth Praska.
Here.
Chair Gordy.
Here.
Any others?
Here.
Jamie Neeland.
Here.
Jessica Johnson.
Here.
Everyone's present, we have a floor on this board.
Excellent, thank you. Item number four is the Consent Agenda presented to you in your packet. I would appreciate a vote.
Point of order?
Point of order?
We forgot number three.
We forgot number three. I was just going to the approval of the agenda, sorry. Approval of, forgot two and three. So, number two, I was looking at the wrong thing. Thanks. Number two is the approval of the agenda, which has been published and available for y'all. I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hilstrum. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Praska. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, sign of five. I say aye.
Aye.
Post. Agenda carries. Public comments. Re-statement, no public comments. Very good, so we have no public comments this evening. We'll move on to item number four then, Consent Agenda. I would like someone to please make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm not sure about the procedures, or if I have a question about one of the items in the consent agenda.
Yep.
How do I, do I do that after we get started?
We can have discussion about that, yes.
After we?
So.
Or right now?
Do we need approval, or are you saying there might be something?
I think there might be something that we need to discuss.
Okay, very good. So, usually that's the discussion component of this, but if you want to raise a question about item number four, Consent Agenda, go ahead.
Is it, is this?
Yep, proper going.
The, if I'm looking at, and this is clarity, Superintendent Dean, so please help me, with the personnel. I'm confused about the F, let me think, if I can see the name. Let me gather my thoughts, because I was looking into some statute earlier, so just bear with me. As far as the high school LMS position.
That was last meeting.
Is, and that person was on unrequested leave of absence, right? Like, they were let go, unrequested, and now the position is being, like, posted.
So, Ms. Praska, can I ask?
Yeah.
Could you hold on to that item until we get to staffing updates with Ms. Dean?
Okay, I wasn't sure, like I said, if it was in the consent agenda, or if it's the next one?
Yep, no, which is item five.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was asking for. Okay.
Okay, very good. So, with that, the consent agenda is open for a motion for approval. I'd appreciate a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Ms. Neeland, is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, appreciate a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Consent agenda carries. Item number five, High Student Achievement Staffing Update. This is the superintendent's office, so Ms. Dean.
Sure, thank you, Chair Gordy.
That's a good statement.
Ms. Praska, just one moment, and I'll get right directly to your question, but in terms of our overall staffing, have met with the principals a couple of times since the last meeting, and we're actually looking pretty good in terms of our hiring this summer. We're continuing to hire, make some, you'll see on the Personnel Consent Agenda today, that we were able to hire some elementary teachers, secondary teachers, and so, we're in a good place, given where we were earlier in the spring. A couple of specific updates, though. First of all, the media specialists, so Director Praska, I appreciate your leading me into this discussion. There's been several legislative updates, legislative actions that happened during the session, that we're really still trying to figure out. We're waiting direct, for direct, well, and I say wait, just superintendents and districts and school boards throughout the state, because a lot of, a lot came out of this year's legislative session. And so, both MSBA and different law firms that work with school law are, are trying to interpret the language coming out of the legislature, so you'll see a lot of that throughout the summer, just different pieces of the legis, aspects of the Omnibus Bill. But specifically in terms of the media specialists, so in the Omnibus Bill, there was an allocation of $40,000 annually, or based on a per pupil formula, but because of the size of our district, we'll fall into that $40,000 annually. To answer your question directly, yes, we did have an unrequested leave for our current media specialist, and because that particular position was an out-of-field position, we still have to follow the rules of an out-of-field permission, and so we still have to post it.
Okay.
One of the, we actually reached out to someone at MDE to get a, to get clarity on that, and yes, they're hoping to, of course, fill those positions with media specialists, and so, like any other out-of-field permission, we have to post the position, demonstrate that there's no one with the license to fill the position, and then we can hire that up.
And then, would that person have the right to come, to call back?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's, thank you. That was my clarity, and I, we've had situations like that before, but I just wanted to make sure with the procedures and protocol, and it gets, it's difficult right now with the different tiers of licenses and everything.
I know.
So, that was, thank you for clarity on that.
Second item or update is Spanish, Spanish being offered at the middle school. This was an oversight, and I'll own it from probably back at the April Board meeting, where we made a decision to offer Spanish at the middle school, and just kind of reworked the electives at the middle school, giving our students a couple, another option, and so, students in seventh and eighth grade will receive Spanish, and students in fifth and sixth grade will continue to be offered writing. There was a couple of reasons for that. Number one, we, of course, wanted our students exposed to Spanish in the middle school because of the IB requirement, but the other is, is just the flexible staffing, and really wanting to make sure that all of our full-time FTEs were, in fact, full. One of the things that I can say with our hiring this year, especially later in this spring, we have offered a few positions to individuals who are dual licensed, and I think that's going to, to really bid well for us as a district, in other words, having that flexibility to move individuals, whether it's between the middle school and the high school, the secondary level, or because the way we're configured with, with the elementary being K-4, and of course, the licensure being usually a K-6 license, having individuals with dual license is going to really, I think, benefit us. For instance, there's an individual that we've been talking to who's math and social studies. I mean, what a combination, or math and, and science, great combination, but again, it gives us more flexibility when it comes to staffing, because we are such a small district, really being able to have options in terms of making all those pieces fit. So, oversight on my part, and not bringing that forward back in April. And then the third thing to provide, or, yeah, the third thing to provide an update on, is the counselors. So, two things have happened over the past month, month. Our Access Behavior Grant was approved, and so, those behavior positions were approved, and then at the same time, as a matter of fact, it was within days, or maybe a day, we also received new state funding to support student support services. And so, we were able to bring back two of our three counselors with very minimal cost to the general fund. It's, I almost want to present it that the new state aid almost pays for the 40% that we have to come out of pocket for our access positions, and so it's almost a wash to add those two of the three counselors back, and so we were able to do that. And then lastly, just to provide an update on, on summer program enrollment, as you can see by the handout, it just provides a number of our elementary students that we're servicing this summer, and our middle school and high schools. Unfortunately, the funding that we've been able to utilize for summer school is exhausted, and so there's some things that we were not be, were not able to offer this summer, and it's unfortunate. But that's the staffing update. Thank you, Chair Gordy.
Any questions for Ms. Dean? So, Ms. Dean, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Media specialist, there's, there's two different postings for an out-of-field placement, one is 60 days, one is 15 days. Do you know which one this falls under?
I believe it falls under the 60 day.
Can you explain why at all? I think one is...
That's always been my understanding, that a posting would have to, to be posted, if you will, for 60 days before we could go outside of the license area.
Sure, so there's two...
I didn't even know there was a 15 day option.
Yeah, if you look at the PLBES website, I think there's a 15 day option as well. The P-L-B-E-S, or whatever.
Telsby.
Whatever, Wisconsin guy talking, right?
Yeah, it's Telsby. I didn't think there was a 15 day. I can look into that.
I believe in this, in the, yeah, and, so, just wondering which one it would fall under? I think one is, I don't remember, initial or something, I don't recall off the board.
I can follow up on that. Thank you for that, Chair Gordy.
Second question, so we're expanding our elective offerings at the middle school, like the addition of Spanish, and you say that you're pulling your writing down to .5? Is that writing teacher then being reduced in FTE, or tandem with their access rate? So, there'll be 50% writing, 50% access?
Correct.
And then, so we're adding some FTE to the middle school to add Spanish in? If, if, if I...
No, the FTE is, it's, think of it as, well, in terms of access, no, no, not at all.
They actually reduced half, because they had a full-time writing, so now it's half-time writing, and half-time Spanish.
And then access was full-time, and now it's half-time.
And it's 50% FTE for Spanish?
Correct.
Okay.
Right?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just thinking about the numbers, right? The middle school's going down, right? But their FTE didn't really go down much, right? It did go down a little bit, right? You took a little bit away from the fifth grade, but then we're adding FTE in the elective area. I'm just, just thinking about how things were spreading, so, okay.
Point of clarity, does the access not count as a .5 FTE?
Yeah.
Because then wouldn't it be going up, .5 FTE?
They were full-time this last year, was a full-time. Now it's a half-time, so there was a cut there. And we're not adding elective because they're taking half, they're taking elective away, they're taking the writing away, so they're just replacing. It isn't a taking away, it's just saying, writing, cutting it in half, getting rid of half, and placing Spanish in that spot, so the elective hasn't changed, access got cut by half, and then we cut with the fifth and whatever. Is it fifth and seventh, or just fifth?
Fifth and eighth.
Fifth and eighth, so.
So, I appreciate the addition of Spanish, I think that'll help at the high school, that's good things to have for more opportunities for our kids. Hopefully, we can continue to grow elective opportunities and staffing at the, at the secondary levels completely, so appreciate that.
Thank you for that.
Good, that's, and then, just summer school program enrollment, were you going to hit that up in your?
Yes, I just provided an update on the actual students who have, who have shown up, if you, or, I should say registered, because not all the sessions are run, have run yet, but we actually exceeded our projection. We were shooting 400 students, and we have 116.
Excellent, awesome. Any questions, and before we move on? No? Very good. Thank you, Ms. Dean, appreciate it.
Thank you.
RCC rental pricing, letter 6A, would like to call Mr. McNulty. And I don't know if you want to include MJ, or come up and say what it is?
I would, I would. It's a score, not a skirt.
That's...
Squirt's wrong.
Send their official record.
All right, Ms. McNulty? Okay, can you hear me? Okay. All right, so, Melissa Johnson, I'm here, and Jim Lor, we went through, we presented it back to the Finance Committee and then the Board back here in May, but we had gone through the rental agreements, costs, and so forth, that MJ here went and checked with other schools, sat down and looked at our costs, and kind of gave you a projection of what you have in your packet of where we want, we feel the cost should be at to, to cover our side, so the rental agreement, really concentrated on slight increases to the in-house people, and bigger increases to kind of the out-of-district people, to really encourage that, of course, staying in the district. And then we also brought to the committee that we wanted to then review for the next year or two, and if we have to make changes, we would come within a couple years, not every five, just to make sure we can kind of do a cost analysis, take a look at, really, is it, what's working, what's not? Is it satisfied, and we need to bring it again? So, kind of bring it as a more constant review to the Board. So, our recommendation, but while, the question's, because this obviously is the super knowledgeable one about our program, is to approve that, those cost changes that we have in the Board packet, so. Take it over to MJ, do you have any other questions regarding that part?
Should I have a question about fieldhouse for commercial? It was 650, and it looks like the proposed was 600. Is that dropping, or is it supposed to be higher than 600?
We just did, we were trying to compare it per court, so if you look at the other courts, we just did the math, so that one would go down. Oh, I hardly ever get a commercial, a renting that space anyway, so it went down, just because if they were to look at the prices, they'd say, well, I want the high school gym instead, because that's, you know what I'm saying? Yep, so that's why we did that, did that that way.
So, just adjusted to?
Just adjusted to make everything more even in line, yeah.
Any other questions for...
I have a question. Is there a reason why for class three, so there are just the three classes, three, four, and five for rentals?
Well, there, I mean, there is one and two, but like, the city gets the facilities, they fall under class one, they get the facilities for free, stuff like that, for elections and things, but yes, as far as fees attached, it's just three, four, and five.
What's, so can you just, what's, so one is a city, what's two? I can't remember.
Uh, I'm sorry, one is the school, two is like the city.
Government.
Government, yes.
Okay.
And then, so three is our local youth and adult groups, so like, that are comprised of at least 75% Rockford resident, Rockford Greenfield residents.
Okay.
So, Ra falls under class three.
Yeah.
And then Ju...
No, I get that. So, my question is, because in the art, in the thing that was presented to us as a Board, it designates class three as Ra slash local youth specifically, but it doesn't say that class three is actually, like, it's local residents and community programming, that's non, that's what you just said, so?
Correct.
I just, where, so is this just an artifact?
Well, local nonprofit is number four, so if you look at that, so...
But like, if a, if an adult, so, I'm just trying to figure out, like, the difference between class three and class four.
So, the one that's presented, you're just looking at like the, the rates, right? So, just to make it shorter up top, I just wrote Ra and local youth, because those are the most used things, but yes, if there's a local...
Anybody local, it's class three.
Anybody local, class three, that's like MOPS or something, yes, that, if that's an adult group, that would be, that would fall under class three.
Perfect, thank you for that clarity. Class four is out of district, but a nonprofit.
Out of district, correct.
Okay, and then class five is commercial, out of district. Okay, thank you, I just wanted that clarity.
No problem.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Excellent.
Well, just because I, because we got the time, man. My question, my other question is, just to help us get, just make sure that the Board understands, like, how you get to these prices, like, I know you have a community, it's just a public meeting, it's just helpful to articulate the process, because I know you have a very good process for it, so you do community engagement, like, so help us understand, like, not only how, like, what process did you take to get to these rates?
So, I took a, a local, other districts, and got their prices for what they're doing, and I try to keep it within similar schools, but I did even put Wayzetta on there because, just because they're so close. So, do all that, spoke with community and advisory council about it, they were in agreement that just because prices of everything are going up, that we need to, but we also didn't want to, like, there's no way we're ever going to get the amount of money back that we're spending to keep the lights on and all that stuff, but when you think about it, so the other research we do is to talk to the other districts, and how they say, we're just trying to get a little bit back, you know, because it's basically, our kids are going to be playing high school sports and pay the high school sports fee that are using our facilities most of the time, 90% of the time, that's who we're renting to. So, a lot of talking to local districts, getting their prices, we have a lot more, I don't think, do they have that comparison, the rental comparison?
No, I just took the rates.
Okay, so the rates were, they're all proposed, there is a rental comparison. We have a lot more items than a lot of the other districts, because we don't have parks and rec. We don't have a lot of community rooms for rental, like, you know, I get asked all the time for like, meeting rooms, can we use your meeting room? So, there's a lot more stuff on ours than others, so it's hard to compare, but the fields, and courts, and all that stuff was easy to compare, so Annandale, Delano, Wayzetta, St. Michael Albertville, Big Lake, comprised all that, and that's how we came up with the prices. So, now we're even with them, but the last time we did this, was five years ago, because I, I had to call all these people, they're like, oh, we have to raise our rates too, so we'll probably be the lowest again for payers. That's why we want to bring it, that's why we want to bring it back more often than, than not, just because, but we also want to make it affordable for our groups, because they are our kids, and that is...
And they're taxpayers.
Right, they're taxpayers, so, but that's what the research that went into it.
Thank you. And then my last clarifying question is, multipurpose stadium, portion of stadium, what's the difference, what does that mean, compared to the football field?
So, like, like, we have pole vault right now, there's a group that rents, they just rent the pole vault area.
Got it.
So, we're not going to charge them for the whole stadium, because we can have Wright County Soccer be on the field while they're doing pole vault, or we can have a track group, Nighthawks Track on the, sorry, these are all the groups that I, I know they hurt now, on the track, so we just did it by a portion of stadium to make it, so we can have multiple users in the space.
That's awesome. Okay. And then, to rent the football field, it's $8?
No, it should be, can we pull that up on the...
Yes.
The proposed is 12.
The proposed is 12, but currently it says it's eight, so I want to be very interested.
It says football field?
Field, soccer. Field, soccer and football.
Those backwards? Those are the, those are the grass fields, I'm sorry. Stadium falls under stadium. Yeah, so the, the turf...
No, but it depends, correct.
The turf stadium is 35 dollars.
Correct.
Is that per hour?
Yes, all these are per hour unless otherwise stated.
Except for the fieldhouse per day.
Right, so the gym is per day.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. I have no more questions.
Excellent, anyone else? I'll ask one question, you have custodial at $38, you know, going up to what your proposed rate is, is that in line with what the contracted rate is?
Yeah, so we took a look at the contractor, like, the highest person, and fully what we could cover, to make sure that they were working and recovering their costs.
At, at regular rate, not overtime rate, correct?
Well, it's overtime for them, if they're doing it, so we had to look into their overtime rate plus their benefits.
Thank you, appreciate it. Just want to make sure we're in line with their negotiations.
And then how does the, how does the community center determine if they're going to assess a custodial charge to a renter, or a lights charge to a renter, or whatever?
If it's a rental like a tournament, then we need a custodian, if it's a Saturday thing where, you know, if it's in the, if it's the community center rooms, because I have community center staff, like, we don't need a custodian for that, because they, we set it up, we tear it down, things like that, so it's based off of the use, the day of use, the time of use, and the multitude, like, how, how big it is, yes.
Got it, thank you.
Sure, very good, thank you for the information. This is an item up for action by the Board for, and I would appreciate a motion for the community ed rental rates increase changes starting July 1, 2023.
I'll make that motion to approve the RCC rental rates.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Neeland, a first and a second has been given, any further discussion?
The only thing I wanted to say was, just because in the, being equitable, this will start July 1st, but the summer programs, I would like to keep, because all the winter programs got to keep these rates, so the summer programs that go into July and August, but then new ones that start, so I would like baseball and Ra softball to be able to use the old rates, so I should mention that.
So, existing contracts will be grandfathered into the current?
Correct.
Makes sense.
And all net new will be this?
Correct, so it's July 1st for all the new ones, but the grandfathered ones, yeah.
All right, so with that...
I'm going to rescind my motion to approve this.
Excellent, so there had been, rescind the motion, it had been seconded, so, actually, what we need to do is, we need to have someone make a new motion on top, very good.
I'll make a new motion.
Or amend, yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve the RCC rental pricing effective July 1, with the exception to current contracts that are in place, that will keep current rates through July and August of this year.
Very good, there's a first to approve the increase and, increase and changes to our fees.
On our...
Grandfathering in.
On our current contracts.
Current contracts.
For July and August.
And net new will be starting with July 1. There is a motion on the table for that, then, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Neeland, there's a first and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries, thank you, MJ, appreciate your work on that.
Thank you.
All right, our next item on here is a resolution acknowledging the contributions and donations, Ms. Dean?
Thank you, Chair Gordy. Each month I have the honor, privilege to share with you the contributions made by our school community. This, this month is no difference in terms of the generosity. I usually talk about the who and the amount, but today I'd like to focus on the what, because when you look, and again, the who's our, our individual family members, staff members, some of our organizations, Ra and the foundation, but if you notice this year's donor list, there's some new donors that we don't often see, University of Minnesota, North Memorial, Twin City Orthopedics, but if you look at what they're funding, again, just a variety, everything from just gift cards, I don't want to say just, but gift cards for our teaching staff, to funding our athletics, specific athletics, whether it's track and field, whether it's baseball, our activities, contributions to our band trip, field trip to the Orway, robotics, I mean, it's just the gamut, in terms of the who, the amount, and then the what, really covering all three of our academics, arts, and athletics. Again, it's just the generosity of this district, and, and spreading it out, and not just focusing on one fund or one activity, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Ms. Dean, I'd like to call out also the amazing donations for CNA program, the technology that's coming in from those areas are outstanding.
Over $65,000 value in donations for, for our CNA program.
Huge.
Amazing, so, this is a, action item in a resolution, so, I'll ask...
Can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
Sorry, but I'm going to echo what Jess said, so, in order to bring curriculum like a CNA program to our school, it takes, it takes investments, and we talk as a Board... And we talk as a board about budget and all of those sort of things. And if we needed to come up with out of a hat over sixty thousand dollars worth of, you know, materials to support training a CNA, that, that could be program limiting for us to even be able to offer this in our schools. So I do want to underline and echo and enthusiastically express gratitude to the, all of the donors on this list and however we approach these organizations to ask for this support, to make it known that we were building out this program, because they wouldn't know if we didn't go out there and have a conversation, I would assume as well. So just gratitude to that as well, so, thank you.
Well, that's kudos to the high school. The high school administrative team.
Fantastic.
Our principal, the counselors, just talking it up and putting out the tentacles. Thank you for acknowledging that.
Yep.
And I'd like to acknowledge Amy Rail though for creating the letters and mailing them out for the donations, so the counselor, the admin assistant in that office was huge.
Well, and I think the gifts and making this possible are amazing, and then also just putting it out there, what this is going to bring to the community. And we're going to have students that go through this program that can be readily employed. So the donations help build this program, which turns out and helps the community.
Does, and we're in a staffing crisis in healthcare right now. So having, you know, individuals being able to be also high school students and certified as a CNA, as a junior.
That's wonderful.
And then also creating a path either to remain in that role for a career or to consider if healthcare is, is like advancing into different types of healthcare too. So it's just impressive, and again, I wanted to underline that somebody had to ask, and so lots of gratitude that way.
Excellent, thank you. This is a resolution, and I will pass, sorry, approve, appreciate a motion for approval.
I'll make the motion to approve the contributions as noted in the board packet.
Thank you very much. There's been a first by Ms. Praska and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards, first and a second, resolution. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jamie Hilstrom.
Aye.
Bill Praska.
Aye.
Eric Gordon.
Aye.
Amy Edwards.
Aye.
Jenny Nealon.
Aye.
Jessica Johnson.
Aye.
The resolution acknowledging the contributions and donations passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. I know we focus on the, the healthcare aspect of it, but every single person appreciates everything that they have done.
Huge.
Ms. McNulty, back for seven B, revised fiscal year 24 budget, or 23 and original budget for 24.
So from the last couple meetings, a couple months, we had started looking at this back in April as a revised budget and a real peek in the original budget and back in May, Finance Council so forth, we went through noting that there were probably some small changes to these budgets as we find two and all things. Just to note, do you remember when you're going through improving it? It's also noting for the original budget for fiscal year 24, if we don't know all the set costs that are coming through legislative debt, that's why you revise it and will need to make the changes so that it will evolve, but keeping you the rest of that through the year. So if you look at the first, and it's small, hard to see it there, but your revised budget right there, just kind of going down and through it, there's nothing major change from the last month, if there wasn't, it's been noted in there. We're looking at projecting a fund balance just under that 17% based off that, which would be an increase from this last year, really noting that it's the, the funds that we talked about, the SRF funds and so forth, that really, and the ID grants that really kind of brought up the revenues and keep that good for this coming year. And then as we go into the next budget, we'll take a look at those changes. So really going to just put it from last month, if anybody had any follow-up questions or things they wanted to talk or look into from last month.
All good.
So jumping to the original budget for this year, the new budget for fiscal year 24, you can note just a couple of things. If you look on the bottom right there, that's the 18.35% showing a projected fund balance increase, and the question goes, well, we're losing two substantial revenue sources, where is that going to? And it's mainly if you look at your bottom lines of grand totals, it's a change in the reduction in expenditures as a comparison to the revenues. Most of our revenue projections, we just took a projection of about 4% and hit on that. Again, the expenditures coming from the legislative, I think they're, my feeling is based on my experience, there will be ones that are going to pop up because there's a lot of mandates, and they are going to cost the district, and that's something as a district and board will have to look at closely. Our part is we really don't know what a lot of them are yet, because they don't know what a lot of them are yet, so. So that's what we're projecting is a one-time shot. I think this will definitely be an evolving budget here depending on all those mandates layout. And then, of course, we also have some contract negotiations coming up, and that plays a big part too. And so we just projected that same balance across, you know, that 4% across the board there. Things go above or below that, then the budget will change. Couple other notes on there, then if you look down towards the bottom too, like the building construction fund, there's a lot of projects going on right now there, and we can take a look at the LTFM later. And so all these monies came in, well, you know, and I'm sure Jim Beheim would really love when they get done. If those get done, you're going to see the money just, that's going to work itself down as a budget built, because obviously the monies are being spent. We just have to pay back everything there, so just to note that when you see changes come on, anything to do with building, construction, how that, why that's changing, so. Otherwise, a few parts you want to look at there, we're going across the COVID relief funds, again, they're reserved out now. So I have made the final five draws, and I have one change that realized today on a TRA parent change I had to send MDE to make a change. It's just, it's an interchange, it's not a money change, so. And then the ID grant stuff as it works its way down too. Those are the two, as I talked before, that are reducing your revenues that, you know, we had for the last, well, three to five years. So I think the board has, has already been, you know, tacking and looking at the expenditures, administrative team has too, so I can reduce that to make up for that. And then again, it's going to evolve, so I'm just going to put it open to any questions on that.
Any questions for Mr. McNulty? Mike, I know that some larger districts with, with a little bit more personnel in their business department have put together projections, I don't want to say unfunded mandate, or, but let's call funding challenging legislation, FMLA, 12, 12 weeks, hourly wage, different things like that, and they put projections out about how that legislation will impact the district. Is there any, is there any place that you would be able to find help, I guess, or template or information to let us know how those things, once funding runs out after a year or two, will be affecting us if those pieces of legislation continue?
Definitely, I'll reach out, I mean, we have a pretty good listserv connection group in the Masmo. Obviously, some of those bigger districts, you can utilize their expertise because they have a person, that's just what they do. And so I will reach out to, I mean, I'm kind of part of three groups, West Masmo group that goes out that way, the AMSD, which is basically the Twin City group, and then the bigger Masmo group. So I will definitely reach out. To me, that would be a good thing to look at, at a finance committee coming up, because I know we have some other parts of finance to discuss regarding our operating too, so I will follow up on that one.
And I know it'd be great information for not only the board, but our employees as well as our community to realize that, yeah, we did get a four, right, an inflation index, you know, but there's a lot of strings attached.
Five percent mandates.
Right, so funding challenges, right, you're not unfunded, funding challenges.
I will definitely do that.
So I appreciate that. And then do we know, have we had, and Rhonda, this might be a question for you, with the hourly wage employee, with that legislation that passed, have we had any issue fulfilling any of the positions within our district that had chosen not to take those vacant?
No, we have not had any issues that I'm aware of, but we have been receiving unemployment notifications every day. You get a stack in the mail, so.
And the funding for that is, yeah, diminishing quick?
Quick.
Yes.
Quicker than I think they anticipated.
Correct, agreed. So updates on that would be helpful.
That would be a funding challenge.
That is a funding challenge, yes.
Well, in point of clarity, where would that show up on this beautiful summary? Like, do we have to have a new line now? These are things that we haven't had before.
No, I think we're the, well, and I don't want to speak for Mike, but I don't, but I think where the rubber hits the road will be within negotiations. Because these funding challenges cost us, unemployment compensation, family leave, there's a cost to that. And so to, to Chair Gordy's point, you know, there's a sense of, oh, we got 4%, so we get 4%. Well, we have to factor in what are the costs of some of the legislative asks or mandates. So I think that's where you're going to see it. And I know, I've gone to several meetings, I know Mike has, we all have. I have one to schedule tomorrow morning, another one next week. Everyone's trying to unpack the legislation, both within districts, but even MDE is struggling to unpack the language. And they're just kind of, well, we don't know yet, we're figuring it out. But in the meantime, we're having to present budgets, we're going into negotiations, so.
There are forty-seven mandates that we're trying to unpack. Just to wrap our heads around that, forty-seven. We have associations helping us and everything, but that's, that's a lot for us to be able to plan for, and we have negotiations coming up and having to keep all that at the forefront.
So I think those costing models, thank you, Chair Gordy for bringing that up, is going to be vital. And Mike is right, Mr. McNulty is correct in saying that, you know, we're a small district and therefore we don't have someone to just dedicate to build out those models. But there'll be models built that will be able to utilize the efforts of NSBA or some of the other professional organizations to be able to plug in our numbers and-
Yeah, I appreciate, I, I know this was budget and, and all of that stuff, and it wasn't legislative update, but I needed to be sure that those words were out because of the impact that is going to belabor Mr. McNulty very soon, so.
The whole Mr. McNulty's, yeah. Right, also needs getting those unemployment and just having them go and fill everything out and study, so we're just documenting, so that's probably the big initial one we're getting with right now.
Thank you. So this is an action item for the board, and I'm sure Mr. McNulty would truly appreciate our action on this, so I would appreciate a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the budget model as presented in the board packet.
So just for clarity, fiscal year revised budget and the original budget approval for fiscal year 24?
Yes, that's what I meant to say.
Thank you very much, so there's a motion on the ta, on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McNulty. Look forward to our next report, which is Pat Whitty.
So just to give you a quick explanation in a nutshell, first thing is that this is a kind of a MDE report that you have to submit every three years, a lot every three years, just to give you a little clue bit of this. So being, we have had district office turnover with a few positions. This was supposed to be done in January, it did not get through to any of us till Cindy got a message in May. And so her and I quickly sat down and looked at this, at both the old ones, what they had, all the details. And so that's why it's come to you six months later than it would be, because the emails obviously weren't going to us. And so no, no information until then. However, I've done, worked with this before, you have some reports, and what you see in front of you is basically, it's a template they give you, laying out the different job titles that you have within, you know, you have all your contracts and so forth, within the district, kind of work your way across to what the pay minimal, pay maximum is. Basically, if you have a contract, let's say you can see some threes and twenties on the far right in that one column there on the years. That's because in the 284 contract, it takes three years to move across the steps, in the teacher contract, it takes 20. Those are your min's and maxes, so where you start, where you finish. And then moving across further, you also get the people, let's say, the maximum time served, so you can see some people up there, there's a 35 on there. Well, that's because we have a couple employees who have worked here for 35 years, that's behind me, yeah, you can look at that. So you see the difference depending on the position, what that is. And so really, they're just looking for, you know, it's kind of, well, are there males and females in the job, how much they're making, where they're at. Our jobs and education are probably all contractual. Obviously, there's some that will so you can work, but it doesn't really matter if you're male or female, as we'll get, we'll get dinged on, on the pay, because she's already said you'll probably get it, because we have a couple of them that are female-dominated. And then she said, well, it looks like they're taking a long time to get to the top. And my explanation when we get that will be, well, it's a contract, so this is what they start and this is what they finish, and that's all. And if you work here the three years, you're going to get to there. So that's just, it's a pretty big norm. I'll just give you a quick example, I was in a small district, I left a ferry, we had two administrators, well, they would have both females, so we got dinged on, you don't have any females there. Well, there's only two of us, so there's, it's just a pretty common thing. So they're really, you're book stamping, you know, firm stamping a report that they do, just to look at it to make sure there is no inequities. But education is a pretty tough area not to because of the way it is, it's regular, I mean, heavily. So that's what you have in front of you. Learned that on Friday afternoon that you have to have a board rule for you to submit this one, so, was on page 26, I think, or 28, all that. So that, going through this, at the very bottom, I wanted to note that you'll see like a payroll total, that is one of the data points that they have to have, it's down there. And so Cindy and I read it from this last calendar year, and it was just over that 12 million, and that's also one of the parts they have to have in the report, so. We're asking you to, I'm asking you to support this and pass this, and then Cindy and I will submit this either this week or by the end of next week. Any questions?
I have a question. You went through most of the columns except for the points column. What does that?
They give you in there, there's a whole bunch of pages on points that you get for certain categories of jobs, and then you're kind of utilized to how you're going to set those, so you have a range of points, let's just say it's 100 to 200. And there's a description of how it goes up, and then you use your own discretion to appoint of how you have it in terms of how many points you get. So we looked at it, one from the old ones, because we got this in a couple weeks to turn this around, and then two, really kind of looked at, really going to, what is it, almost like a P, as part of what they uses the breakdown, so, you know, for example, since Miss Dean is here, you know, her job is going to have the higher point thing, because she's at the, you should say, the top of the heap that way, and you see, as you kind of work your way, the principals, teachers, the instructional ones are higher points, and then goes into the, you know, maybe down near playground attendance and so forth, because they are just part-time and it's not as much paid. So they kind of break it down in terms of that, even though they're all very important. And then you have a chance to review it. She kind of worked it with us because it was a quick thing, giving us the old one, and we didn't vary the points too much, except for we noticed that the past one had incorrect numbers in terms of not that one, but other columns, so, yeah. We will probably revise it as we now know that it's due and join the years again, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. McNulty? With no questions, this is an item for action as well, so I'd like a motion for approval of pay equity implementation report for Minnesota Management Budget, please.
I will make a motion to approve the pay equity report as presented in our packet.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon, there's a first, can I have a second, please?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Hilstrom, there's a first, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. McNulty, appreciate your time and effort. Oh, and we're going to keep you up here with, and I would guess that, Mr. Luer, is Mr. Luer going to join you, is this all going to be you?
It's need for not use here in case you have any direct questions on the LTFM.
Very good.
So I think Gordy for getting you all in a row too, so that was nice. Again, just kind of go back, LTFM, long-term facility maintenance, this is not the capital and the business stuff that you guys have also bonded for, this is just that. So there are some bonds out for that LTFM that they're working on projects now, where Mr. Luer is extremely busy, but all three, but that's, that's a big part. And so do note that-
And so, do note that, again, when this summer gets done, a good portion of that will be completed, i.e. there's the one coming, which would be the elementary roof still falling near. So, this report also looks at, is you did this earlier last March, not this last one, but the one before, because you went out for the bonding for LTFM. And so, working with ICE, yes, they are very involved in this submission that we put to the MDE also, because they are, we're working with them, and one of their projection, part of the work is projecting this out. So, when you look at this report, once you get past the next couple of years, it becomes more just of a percentage increase. Knowing one thing, if you look at the key to anything in the school, it's the student population. And so, when you're looking at revenues coming in on the page, that's like the second part right there, you kind of go there on the student count. If you look past the first couple of years, you kind of see that, well, you see that there's that consistent amount, but this changes every year, this report. So, if our population goes up or down, that's going to change where we're going to project out, we just do a constant. Because of projection, I know demographically, I've done a couple of years ago, was to really have, you're going to certain, well, you're not going to put that in there until you know what happens, because it changes every year. And in that role, so does our LTFM monies grow. So, when you're trying to say, hey, we got the status quo right now, so we're going to project our budget base off that. If it grows, that's a great thing, because we'll probably have to do some more work anyways. Also note that about half those monies that are bonded are gone, so that these projects are being, are taking away about half the monies, let's say a five-hundred thousand, two-hundred fifty thousand, that's gone every year to this project for the next, this one, ten years. So, when you look at outside projection, you're seeing that that monies, the total revenues are only, they're going to get, you know, your five-hundred thousand, but you're really only getting half that because of the projects on right now. So, this is really just a snapshot in time, it changes every year, like you can change constantly throughout the year, in my experience. We're not overly concerned with you going to, the fact that, you know, it's more to help you plan. And so, I think one of the things that Mr. Lur and myself are going to sit down after he gets done with the summer, and we've already talked about this in the fall, and in the winter, sit down with ICS and really kind of look at a true, more detailed ten-year plan of, you know, hey, but you know, this is going to come in so many years, kind of like Mr. Kane's gave, you know certain things are coming, we're going to see what that's going to be, and based on, and again, that will change, too, as our time goes, so, but he's a little bit busy now, so we're going to wait till the winter time and maybe not snow days, not all shoveling, where we can sit down and start piecing that apart. That'll be something we'll, as facilities stuff and discussion goals, we'll be bringing to. Otherwise, this is something, again, we submit to the MDE, it will happen in July, it's got to happen by July thirty-first, so you look for a board approval at that time, and then submit the plan that we have in mind.
Excellent. Any questions for Mr. McNulty or Mr. Lur?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, just to fully understand what's going on here. So, the first page of the PowerPoint, the different categories that you have, like building envelope and building hardware and equipment, the numbers that go out year by year, those are just kind of estimates based on like a percentage of our total LTFM, or like the fifty thousand for the building envelope that goes out a bunch of years, and that's just, which is based on a percentage?
Yeah, they figure you have some, they figure you have some cost going to maybe type, things that are going to happen, just on a daily, yearly basis, and some of your costs for your inspections is going there, too. So, you have your elevator inspections, you have the fire marshals, those are all going to come into that play, too, so there's some set costs that just happen.
And those things are just, like, they're not for particular projects, they're just kind of a guess based on what's happened in past years, type of thing.
Yep.
Can I answer a little bit more to that?
Sure, come on up, Mr. Lur.
So, the question, yeah, the question to explain a little more of where we get to those numbers, is three years ago, we did a facility study with ICS, so they come through our complete facilities, and then they determine what needs to be repaired and fixed, and they'll spread those costs out over years. So, that fifty thousand dollars might be attached to a project that they see that needs to be done within that time period. That's the life expectancy that would remain, you could do it online. The problem with it is, based on funding, it might get kicked down the road a little bit, if we're going to have no funding to do it. So, most of those numbers do come from something that, I mean, we just took the numbers out of the sky.
Right.
It's a facility study we did three years ago, and then as we accomplish some of them, they get knocked off, and then the numbers get, you know, so, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, no.
I don't know if you knew that, Mike.
No, that's good, that's the same stuff.
Excellent. Ms. Hillstrom, you good with your questions?
Yep.
Very good, any other questions, then?
Yeah, I just have one, just a question, based on kind of putting this annual document together, that always keeps us straight, is there anything that jumps out at you as being worrisome, that the board needs to have a line of sight to from a funding perspective that we haven't discussed, that, you know, anything as it relates to this plan? Or do we feel like things are pretty well ticked and tied, and we've got a good line of sight to funding our future needs?
You might have two different answers. From a funding perspective with LTFM, and I know we're using some of that for bonding, a lot of that money is being used for replacement of RCC flooring, roofs up the elementary. That doesn't cover a lot of the other items that are going to come to ahead within the next five years, that we will need significant amount of money to do. So, for example, one of the things that's been on our hit list since I've been here is nine air handling units that need to be replaced, that never were replaced under the original two thousand fifteen referendum, that we try to squeeze in LTFM every year, but we just don't have the funds for it. Tried to squeeze a couple in through this bonding mechanism, but the LTF flying for the RCC came out a little bit more money than we expected, things are just going up so much. So, yeah, that, to be honest with you, yes, there's some things that are, that I think that will be put in a plan, so that if the board decides to look at something, don't have numbers in front of them, that, and I'm not saying you're going to, going to an adblocker, but if you decide to do referendum funding, you'll have that list in front of you that, these are some big ticket items that need to be looked at.
And we're in good shape for the roofing projects and air handlers for the next project? At the elementary, correct?
So, we're in the process of finalizing the architectural designs for the roofing project at the elementary, which we've changed processes, we're not going to stick with the same design we have, we're going to have a little bit better roof, and that, which is kind of weird, but it's going to save us some money, once we go out for bids, and we're going to go out for bids, probably in the next couple of months, for next year. The air handlers that are, we're having issues with, we're getting nickel and dime now. So, there's a couple air handlers at the elementary school that I just spent significant amount of money to replace two air conditioning compressors that are passive life expectancy. But we have to do it because we have to educate kids. So, that's the part where my, our LTFM portion of the money I have to spend besides the bond, gets eaten up pretty fast. Hot water heater for the middle schools, oh, you know, that's a pretty significant chunk of change. So, yes, it'll, it'll get nickel and dime pretty hard, and it's the stuff that we don't foresee.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other fellows?
Just a point of clarification, we talked about referendum, this would be bonding, or what would be the referendum?
It would be bonding.
Bonding, right?
Bonding buildings.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so I just, one of them.
Mr. McNulty, are we good?
Yes.
Mr. Lur, are we good? Very good, no other questions from the board? This is a resolution item, so I'd appreciate a motion to adopt the resolution adopting Rockford School District's LTFM ten-year plan.
I will make a motion adopting the resolution adopting the Rockford School District's LTFM ten-year plan.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon, there's a first, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Prasca, there's a first, a second, any discussion? This is a resolution item, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Jamie Hillstrom?
Aye.
Beth Prasca?
Aye.
Eric Gordy?
Aye.
Amy Edwards?
Aye.
Jessica Johnson?
Aye.
We have a unanimous vote to cast a resolution adopting the school district's long-term facility maintenance plan.
Thank you very much, appreciate your work. You, too, lots of work. So, Lur, I'm sure your projects are going swimmingly, yes?
They're going well.
Good. Mr. McNulty, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. Eight B, Minnesota State High School League renewal membership for Ms. Dean.
Thank you, Chair Gordy. The resolution in front of you is for our membership to Minnesota State High School League, it's an annual membership, and the board, if we are going to continue to participate in Minnesota State High School League, then we will need board action to authorize the membership. And we are recommending that we continue our membership weekly.
Very good, any questions for Miss Dean?
Yes.
Please, Miss Dean.
Do we know if the membership dues are going up, staying the same or changing at all?
I have not heard that they were going up.
I know they did last year, but I haven't heard anything to this year.
Right, correct.
This may, you know...
So, I can't, I don't know, I haven't asked that question, but I have not heard any conversation even about it. It's a good question.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, any other questions? I would appreciate a motion to adopt the resolution for membership in the MSHSL.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards, can I have a second?
Second.
Any, thank you, Ms. Nealon, any further discussion? As this is a resolution, Madam Clerk?
Jamie Hillstrom?
Aye.
Beth Prasca?
Aye.
Eric Edwards?
Eric, Eric Edwards? Eric Gordy?
Eric Gordy says aye.
Amy Edwards?
Says aye.
Jamie, Eric, Jamie. Jamie Nealon?
Aye.
Jessica Johnson?
Aye.
That would be, oh, to pass a resolution for Minnesota State High School League renewal membership. Oh, Gordy.
Excellent, thank you so much, Jessica. We will move on to the Iowa Authorization Resolution, Ms. Dean?
Yes, Chair Gordy. This is the resolution to authorize a new superintendent to be the school district's Iowa. It is a, it provides access to the state's MDE internal accounting systems and state management system. It's an annual resolution, we actually, this was just on the agenda a few months ago for myself, because mine had to be renewed, but this would be for the new incoming superintendent, so starting July one, you would have access to all of our MDE and state files and accounts.
Excellent, but thank you again for bringing this back up.
So, does that rescind your ability to go in then? So, is, will we get a new one, does that rescind, so then?
It will. Yes, thank you.
Clarification, any other questions?
Is this, is this made effective based on July first, that's his starting date?
Correct, it'll be effective July one.
When he takes his position. Any questions? Very good, I appreciate a motion for the Iowa resolution, or reauthorization resolution.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Prasca, any further discussion? As this is a resolution, Madam Clerk?
Jamie Hillstrom?
Aye.
Beth Prasca?
Aye.
Eric Gordy?
Aye.
Amy Edwards?
Aye.
Jamie Nealon? Jamie, why did I do this? What is wrong with me? Jamie Nealon!
Aye.
I'm so sorry, Jessica Johnson?
Aye.
He almost had it. Um...
Resolution, yes.
Pass the unanimous.
Excellent, thank you so much, that brings us to the end of the business portion of our meeting. Any administrators in attendance, if you wish to depart, please do so, thank you for your time. We will then, on number nine, the regular meeting of the board will be on Monday, July...
Seventeenth.
Something.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, at six-thirty.
We have a five-thirty work session.
In the boardroom, and we have a five-thirty work session on the same day.
Yep, five-thirty work session here, and followed by a regular session at six-thirty.
Perfect, and those of you both...
Eric Gordy, I will be out on that.
Monday, Ms. Prasca will not be in attendance those days, thank you. Glad to know. Nine B, Board Committee Updates.
I'm not going first.
You're not going first, okay, we'll all go first.
Hello?
Perfect.
This will be pretty easy, because none of the committees I'm on have met since our last meeting. So, but we did have the National Honor Society induction and senior awards, we had, I cooked up a huge plate of sausage for the senior breakfast on graduation day, and of course, graduation, the staff recognition banquet breakfast, and that, that's about it.
Thank you very much. Any questions? No, Ms. Prasca?
Oh, right, well, first, I did join the legislation webinar, which turned out to be a bit of a waste of time, because every single item, they said, whoa, we're going to have to have another meeting about that. I didn't learn anything new at that. Then I went to the final celebration, which was lovely, and we had a policy committee meeting on June twelfth, and we have our work cut out for us this year, because there's going to be a lot of policies. And this morning, I had the C meeting, so there's quite a lot to talk about, that Courtney is going to place the documents in the Google Drive, because they broke down all of the ominous bill into little bullet points that are a little bit easier to read than reading the whole ominous bill, so you might want to just take a peek at it, you've heard Rhonda talking about some of it. I particularly was interested in the READS Act, of course, and there's a few highlights there. The district must employ or contract a literacy lead by August thirtieth, 2025, so we have time for that. And then also, by '25, '26, intervention programs must be taught by a certified or licensed reading specialist, which is a different license than a regular teaching license. And there's a lot of things in there to digest, so just, if you have an opportunity to look into it, I would recommend it, because this is all going to come back at us as policy changes and district changes. And another item that they shared is not, it wasn't made by anybody, it was made by a district as a C member, and just to kind of put it forward, he, this person did the super kind of, did the top twenty-five things that they have to do before the school starts. And it's just, it already happened, you had to change the Juneteenth as a district's close, you have to do moving forward planning for up to age twenty-two, so that's more Maseko, now they are staying, and that's personally, I'm happy about that, but that is going to change, because it'll, if students that are in the transition get to stay until they're twenty-two, that adds a whole nother year, so you think about capacity, though, it's wonderful, but capacity. Free meals, allocation of eighty percent of compensatory to the building, for, there's impact for that, summer unemployment, American Indian education, there's more Maseko stuff for early childhood special education, we have to have mental products in the school, we have to have that opiate antagonist, we have to have paid IA training, don't even know what that means. We have to look at the curriculum, because now the curriculum has to be a curriculum that is pushed forward by the MDE as far as signs of reading, I think we should be okay, but that's something to look into. We have to have active shooter drills, suicide prevention, online instruction, gifted and talented is changing. instruction, gifted and talented is changing. The REEDS Act is gonna be huge. Sacred tobacco, I guess that must mean Indian education. Teacher probationary period reduction, preschool teacher bargaining, use of restricted procedures, tracking and documentation, decide how to provide, in the second line, decide how to provide services to students in care or treatment. Students' directory information is private data, and then something about qualify for BARR program school. Don't know what that means. So anyways, I read this, because that's a lot to do before September. And so, that's why the policy committee's gonna be busy, the district office is gonna be busy, and there's gonna be a lot of moving pieces between now and start of the school year that is gonna involve all of us. And I wouldn't be surprised if we didn't have to meet for, as a policy committee, a couple times, honestly. And then figure out if we're gonna have to, how we push those forward and have approval, when the, it might not even be out in time for the August meeting to approve before the school year. So there's some different things. And another, like, the person that directs C is one more year, and then he's retiring. He's impossible to replace. And some of the large districts that are C memberships, Anoka, Hennessy, and Fredley, they're leaving. So the question is, is C gonna be a viable entity moving forward, and what's that gonna look like if they're not? I think that they're import, they're viable, but then we also have MRE, which has a new, which, so like, I don't know. I don't know what's gonna happen, but we had a discussion about it, and just...
Excellent. That's, uh, it's a load. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any, any questions for Ms. Prasko?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a lot, but thank you.
As I think Rhonda's like, "Oh, thank goodness I retired." And Chris is like, "Wait a minute. I work at the DL."
If I could just add one thing, one of the things that we did learn, um, at one of our legislative updates, is that some of the mandates that are, um, in, in law, if you will, well, just later, um, MSBA is recommending or saying that they do not have to have a first read and a second read, that because it's a change in the law, it can just be presented and the board can act upon it without a first and a second read. So just something to consider.
In our policies, it states that, like, you really don't, like...
Yeah.
We don't have a choice.
Right. So in terms of our process of always wanting the cadence of a first read, second read, some of those...
That with the COVID one.
Yep.
We did. It was one time.
I can go next.
Thank you.
None of my, uh, committees that I am on met either, so, um, it was all fun stuff. Um, senior, I went, I went to senior awards, uh, kinda see what it was about. That was fun to watch, watch everybody get their scholarships. Um, I did some kind of, uh, fun end-of-the-year stuff for my kids, a band concert, and then arts and academic night at the elementary school, which I always love. I always, my favorite part is the birds in first grade. Um, and then I went to, uh, graduation, that graduation, and the, uh, teacher awards end of the year banquet.
I can go.
You ready?
Yep. So I attended senior awards, um, graduation, staff recognition, policy committee meeting, um, May and June Masiko meetings. Usually, my June one that follows our board meeting, but we had locked it up, uh, and, um, signed before us.
I'll go. Ms. Edwards, she'll follow, follow up, I would hope?
Sure.
All right. Um, so busy time. So, May 17th, I had Northwest Suburban, uh, Board Meeting at the same time I was at National Honor Society, so I ducked out of National Honor Society, did that meeting, came back into National Honor Society, and then watched Jessica deliver our board aboard at the, uh, at senior awards. So thank you for doing that. On the 19th, we had a facilities committee, where we talked about, uh, what our new floor may look like with our, uh, screens. Uh, then also on the 19th, Rhonda, Amy and I, and, and Mr. Daniger had a conversation about staffing and finance impacts with counseling positions. Then on the 25th, MSBA had a school and unemployment's benefit webinar, uh, that I listened to, and how that impacts, and how that, when that funding runs out, how that may adversely impact, um, our, our budget. On the 26th, an AMSD Board of Directors report, which came, or meeting which, uh, basically was a legislative recap again. Seems like everyone's hitting a lot of that information. Um, June 2nd, we had commencement. June, um, 6th, I had something. Oh, yeah, board prep meeting. There you go. Uh, June 7th, the, uh, Board Chair MSBA, uh, virtual conversation occurred on that day. It was a great meeting, and that's where I had asked some questions about when people ran their, um, meetings. Had some good information. On the 8th, we had recognition, and on the 16th and the 20th, Amy and I met for superintendent evaluation prep and writing. So there, a couple things on that.
Indeed. Just a half of what he said. Okay. So, uh, similar to, uh, to Mr. Gordy attended, and the rest of the board, really enjoyed the commencement. Nice job to all of the team that, um, put that together, um, as well as, yeah, just really good. Um, the end-of-year celebration was spot on, as always. Um, just really nice to see the excitement going into the summertime for everybody. So, just really nice. Um, so kudos to everyone that was a part of that. Similarly, to Mr. Gordy, um, attended the facilities committee, where we took a look at the flooring and made some of those final decisions. Again, really, I would say that the district, uh, leadership made the final decisions, and really, um, is working to make sure that that space is set up for success for years to come, based on the use of that facility. We're just here to support and make sure that the funding is available for those certifications. So, just really appreciate being a part of that. Um, uh, similarly, uh, finance prep, staffing discussion with, uh, Superintendent Dean and Mr. Daniger, specific to some of the legislative changes with the counseling positions. Um, policy committee on June the 12th, uh, board prep on June the 6th. Um, couple of evaluation discussions with Chair Gordy to prep for the, um, closed session meeting tonight. Busy last few weeks. It's my board updates.
Yes. Ms. Dean, what is the shame?
Well, well, well.
No, I'm just kidding. To quote someone, we have time. I don't know who said that in here.
I did. I have questions.
No, no, no. Um, of course, just a busy time of year, end of the school year. So, NHS induction, I can't believe we haven't had a board meeting since then. It seemed like a long time.
It was like the day before.
But attended, um, NHS induction, of course, followed by senior awards. Uh, we had our last meeting for, I'm on the Minnesota State High School League DEIB committee, and we had our last meeting, uh, three weeks ago. Um, also attended the Best Prep Annual Luncheon. Uh, Best Prep is most known for the Stock Market Game. That's the organization. Uh, but they also have a, uh, uh, a program called Cloud Coach, where they match, uh, corporate volunteers up with kids, and they kind of impale each other. Uh, they also bring in guest speakers anyhow, their annual luncheon. Um, several meetings on the RCC flooring and other related facility updates for the summer, whether it was secured entries, or, um, meeting on the color for, for the curtains and things like that. Um, attended a lot of, um, activities, athletic activities, um, whether it's softball, track and field, attended a baseball game. Um, I was gonna attend the next one, and it didn't happen too soon, sorry. Um, participated, or I should say, listened to a lot, uh, many legislative updates over the past three weeks since, um, this bill was passed at the end of May. Still a lot to unpack there. Um, again, our state organizations are trying to get their head around, um, all the, the tentacles of some of the language. Um, have attended a few, um, meetings related to the traffic on County Road 50, what the plan is for this summer. Um, originally, for the past almost full year, it was, we'll start right away in the summer, um, be done by August 1. Now, it's not even going out forbid until July. So, we're gonna have a conversation with the county tomorrow again. Um, and these conversations are occurring with, uh, the city of Rockford, both the city mayor and the, the city manager, and the city of Greenfield, the mayor, usually not the mayor, but the city manager, um, because of course, that's Greenfield property on the, or, or, um, city, city, on the other side of 50 from the high school. Um, but that conversation is going to happen tomorrow, that what do we do? Because now, it's been pushed back that they will be starting that construction on day one.
What are they doing?
They are, um, they are putting in a, a couple of things. From where the bus garage entrance is, all the way down to Dogwood. They are, that's what they're improving. It's part of the Safe Routes to School, um, initiative and grant money. Um, that's, I don't know if you remember, uh, Director Praska, but five years ago, uh, we were asked to, um, gather data, um, you know, how many kids ride to school, ride their bike to school, walk to school, uh, how many parents pick up drop-offs, just to get a sense of safe, of, of how our kids get to and from school. And through that, um, collection of data, we were able to then apply for, um, grants through the state and through the county to improve those safe routes. It's how we funded the patrols up here by Casey's. So, that's the program, that's the funding. Um, so it's not costing the district anything. We just had to be part of, of the process. So what they are doing, a couple of things. Um, they are putting in a rescue, um, island, for lack of a better word, between the east and west traffic. So, so kids crossing right there at Reeds, um, would be able to stop center in the center median, and then continue on if, if, you know, traffic dictates that. Um, there'll also be two, um, lights similar to what they have up at Casey's, pedestrian crossing, walks, one down by the entrance of Reeds, and the other one up by, um, actually, it's the sidewalk. Uh, how can I say this? Because coming out of the neighborhood across the street, now down by the high school, it's not in line with our entry to the high school. It's kind of jockey, uh, but putting a crossing light there. So, it's adding a bypass lane, so it's, it's, it's a lot. And the problem is, is that now, again, it was supposed to start in July, and now it's not going out forbid until the end of, until mid-July here. And so, it will likely not be done by day one.
And that's a main hurdle fear.
That's the conversation that we have to have. Um, Greenfield is pushing to, just so you know, Greenfield is pushing to, um, to stay on, on the, um, that we continue with the timeline, even though it's delayed. Um...
I'm a resident of Greenfield. I will vote no to that.
And we are, we're just, we're in kind of a holding pattern. We don't know what, um, what the county's gonna come back with, because we've been pushing, like, like, let's go. We, we gotta get it going. Um, that's, we can't have that road tore up at the first, at the beginning of school.
There's a workaround to get to the middle school down here. You'd go around 55, but the Reeds is smack in the middle of it.
Yeah.
So, they did say that once they get started, it's really, uh, because it's mostly blacktop, um, it's a quick turnaround, um, but it, it's going to cause quite the... Quite the...
Opportunity.
Issues.
Opportunity, yeah.
The opportunity, quite the opportunity.
Quite the opportunity to have a lot of traffic delays.
Correct. Um, moving on with my board report.
Shoot. Dang it. Ask you any questions?
Um, no, I, I talked too long on that. Um, attended, um, Thousand Hearts Surf, because I saw several board members there. Arts and Academic Showcase, of course. The Strive Banquet. The Strive Banquet was, um, just one of those feel-good events. Um, also participated and attended the, the NAIPAC celebration. We had it over at the park again this year, uh, well-attended by our NAIPAC, uh, families. Um, shortly after that, the very next day, I think, was the senior breakfast. Um, then, of course, graduation, the end-of-the-year program, met with the policy committee, um, attended the Masiko Executive Committee meeting, um, just on Tuesday, and attended another Masiko train today. And over the past five weeks, I've met, uh, with, uh, Jeff Riedelhofer a couple of times, and he actually came over last week and visited. So, just continuing to make all those connections.
Yes, Ms. Prasko?
I want to say thank you for going to the Strive Banquet, and then helping that, you know, continue to grow, because that was something that was on the chopping block and not going well before you came. So, thank you for encouraging.
Flourishing.
Yes, thank you for that, because that was really, prior to you, it wasn't flourishing. So, thank you.
It's, again, it's not me. It's those volunteers.
I know. But we have to open up...
And they volunteer.
But you, but you let them volunteer here in the school, and you help communicate between the students that would benefit and the volunteers. So, thank you, because that was really going to go away.
You're welcome.
I'm very close friends with one of them, so I know the background story of it.
Thank you for that. Well, then I'll have to give a shout-out to Cheryl Eulen, because she's the staff person who helps, um, coordinate and make, um, in terms of, um, informing the office when kids need to meet and those sorts of things. So Cheryl Eulen at the high school.
Any questions for Ms. Dean? You, you were guessing the time to it that we'd be done, or was actually, guess what? Yep, we're gonna make it longer, though. Because we need to, uh, make an, uh, an adjustment to our agenda, um, for the closed session summary. So, Ms. Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to add an agenda item, item number 10, to our agenda this evening, titled "The Superintendent Evaluation Closed Session Summary." Um, and I believe that just requires a second and a simple motion.
Yep. Yep. So, there is a motion on the table to add item number 10, closed session summary, regards to the superintendent's summary. So, there is a motion. I would appreciate a second.
I'm happy to give additional clarity. Just, um, it's a procedural issue that we need to do, um, whenever we're in a closed session, and discuss something the next time we're actually in an open session. We do need to provide that summary, because we held it in the work session immediately prior. We do need to share the summary, which Chair Gordy is prepared to, to share, um, the summary. So, just, again, it's a statute sort of a situation. So, that's the why.
So, there's a motion to add number 10. I would appreciate a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hilstrom. There's first and a second. We do require two thirds on this. So, all those in favor, signify by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. All right, so item 10 has been added, and we will go on to item 10 with the closed session summary, and I will read a brief statement about that. Um, "On Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, the superintendent evaluation process was completed in accordance with Board Policy 304. The district contract language of the Minnesota Statute 123B dot 143, board members participated, including me, Edwards, Eric Gordy, Jamie Hilstrom, Jessica Johnson, Jenny Nealon, and Beth Praska. The board completed a goals-based evaluation process reflected on Superintendent Dean's time served in the district in capacity of superintendent for the '22-'23 school year. Ms. Dean received an aggregate performance rating of effective, leveraging the MSVA MS, MASA performance rating criteria. Areas of focus were inclusive of governance, school and district operations, and human resources. Ms. Dean's annual goals were reviewed and determined to be achieved." Thank you. That is our summary for that, and with that, we are adjourned. So, I would appreciate a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hilstrom, and a second?
Second.
And a second by Ms. Johnson. Hang on. Any discussion?
All in.
All in favor, signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. We are adjourned at 7:59.
748?
Yes.
Shooting for eight.
I said 55.
I go to, Jamie, you might be 748.
We were, by one minute.
Chris did, I think, 748.
Come on, my phone says 759. Come on, come on.